Took that and let U N T have it, they didn't let us have it, they gave it to U N T. So, that's why that number is so out of whack. That was a budget amendment specifically for the Corps.
We spent nine grand there though?
We had, Gary had the mulch. Yeah, that was a mulch for nine grand.
And in this area, we can hear.
Yeah, we care the latter. Parks are expensive because of liability, so you can't.
So, so look, I'm not, I'm not gonna spend any of this twelve. I'm not gonna spend any money at all until I bring back to you a detailed list. Because, again, if, if you say Whit Park's not a priority, the Council says, no, we wanna make umbrellas over this thing or whatever, that's fine, that's what you guys get to decide. I'm gonna bring you a big list and you prioritize, and then I'll execute your priorities.
Yeah, just to clarify, where you and I disagree is, to me, that's a bunch of workshops that would be done before you vote on the budget. I wouldn't do it afterwards. That's my point of clarity here is, we're either, we're gonna put money in a holding bucket, then either detail it out or pull the money out. Don't do more than, pull it out since here. That's, that's my point here is, if you want to put money in, detail it, if you're not, pull it out.
Okay, but I understand what you're saying. I see your point, your point is in, in, if I had unlimited time, and unlimited ability, and unlimited staff, and unlimited parks departments, unlimited budget people, that's fine, but I don't, so.
I'm just curious, Dan, would that be your expectation of every line item in this budget proposal? That, 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 that every number would be detailed to that, to that extent?
Yeah, my expectation is, before you spend the public's money, you have a detailed line on what it's gonna go for, and you hold it back.
Before you spend.
Yeah, before you vote on it.
Okay.
You better plan on more than two budget conferences or workshops next year, because that's one hell of a lot of work.
Yes, because our main priority is that budget, and that's what we should work on.
Okay, alright, so, we've got playground here, I'd say twelve is there. Uh, rest of stuff is, is pretty, pretty standard. The town mowing, everybody knows, that number used to be nine thousand dollars, but we bought mowing equipment. Spent five thousand and bought the equipment. We've already paid for it several times over. It's nine thousand dollars a year is what we were spending. So that's, part of that, as we, you know, as the money crashed on us the last couple of years, that's one of the things we have to do, to run the town on only, you know, eighty thousand dollars, is we bought a mower. And we now contract that out with the little services. A couple of things here, real quick, the town hall improvements is basically just doorknobs, replaced the filters, the toilet broke, that's town hall improvements. It's, it's a thousand dollars of Mickey Mouse things. In two thousand fifteen, it was zero, nothing broke. This year, we've had a couple of things break. What are you gonna do? There's another one here, which is town hall improvements, let's see, what was the, one of these ones in here, uh, it was the, one of was the parking lot? Where's the parking lot? Which one?
That was the capital, town hall improvements was the repair of the air conditioner. Which was the...
Oh, there's the capital improvements?
Yeah.
That's seventy-four hundred, we don't budget any capital improvements for the city. Capital improvements for the city are roads, new roads, or, I mean, building for the city. Most of our cap X is on utility side. Buying capital equipment. But we did spend seventy-four hundred here, which, again, was a one-off, that was because we had to put in a handicap park in for the election. That was driven by the election, that's being a polling place. And, and we're working on becoming a polling place, right?
I've already sent that out.
Okay, we're trying to become our own polling place, they want us to vote on it.
We're trying to become our own precinct, that's what I'm asking.
We're trying to be separate. We're fighting hard getting county right now. Drainage improvements, we had some stuff, which was roadwork on this end of town, it was a one-shot deal, we had our own drainage easements, we did not. We didn't fix the drainage easements because the person had their house up for sale, they requested we not fix the easements. Going to the lake until they sold their property. It's a small town, we said, fine, sell your property, they did. We now went in and cleaned out the drainage easement and fixed it all up. Alright, debt payments go up, one forty-nine, we're gonna retire one forty-nine thousand this year. Uh, there's another line item in here, real quick, so everybody knows, we have, um, town functions, that's the usual suspects, that is Easter egg hunt, Halloween, so that kinda stuff. I've added a little bit to it because we now have a welcome committee that's already in place, that wants to go around, they've got welcome baskets, and they want to give the new residents welcome baskets and information packets and little gifts of Lincoln Village. So, I've budgeted some money into that, so I think it'd be nice. We used to do that here, we used to do it, it got away from us, you know, as these things do. And like I said, we've come out of the bottom, we're on our way up, I think it's a nice gesture, it'd be nice, I already have volunteers who've done it.
It's a great program.
Um, I gave them the go-ahead, they've already spent four or five hundred dollars. So, I think it's gonna be great. So, that's why that money is a little higher than, yeah, I threw in a thousand dollars there. It doesn't matter how many new people come into town, it should be about six or seven, okay? Again, we don't budget for abankments, we hope we don't have to budget for, you know, anybody to, to do it. We don't budget for attorney fees, we don't budget for the Corps. Okay? Any questions about any particular lines here? A lot of them are given, we don't have control over the tax collector, the appraisal district. Any questions?
So, year-to-date, at four hundred thirty-four thousand, and we're, uh, our budget's forecast is three seventy-eight?
Yep.
That's a difference in about, I think, six thousand bucks?
Right.
Where, where are we making that up?
Uh, a lot of it is in the, um, what, legal fees?
Yeah, that's true, okay, that's a good thirty, that's thirty out there.
Of course, the question is, with the confidence, that's gonna be that point. If every, if every year we've been spending more, I don't know how much confidence we have to really do.
The reason, the uncertainty I see in the legal fees, it, before was litigation, I think the litigation risk is low. The development costs now are on the flip side. You could incur cost due to developers that, you know, might get reimbursed later, but it's not clear, there might be an off shift. That's why, that's to me the uncertainty where the variance lies.
To that point, where's the other, where's the other thirty-two? Because the playground was up by twelve, well, it's by eight, so we got thirty thousand difference, right? So, fire A and S.
Thirteen, thirteen thousand of it's on five oh five one. Right?
Right, I mean, the previous year's budget was three ninety-eight, now we're at three seventy-eight.
No, I'm talking about actual four thirty-four, year-to-date, through July.
So, most of that is in the, is in the legal fees.
Yeah, thirty of the fifty-six. Right?
Thirty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, we have twenty-six left. I guess there's a spread.
Is there a big data that's predicted?
Spread, there's sixty-seven.
No, no, it's year-to-date, that's through ten months.
A bay of sixty-seven hundred, I'm out.
That's only through ten months.
That's the big hitter, that's, that's just my question.
Yeah, this is ten months for, just to give you an idea of where we're at, I, I updated it to go through July. Okay?
Yep.
So, that's kind of the, you know, that's why payroll's only fifty, you know, you only give away the ten months of pay.
So, can you move on?
So, you can see we're right on the money.
So, let's go down the money. So, we are at four thirty-four through ten months.
Yep.
We're gonna be at four fifty-something, or sixty, I guess, and we're gonna drop down to three seventy-eight?
Probably, probably about four fifty.
So, we're gonna cut a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand, well, two months, about eighteen thousand, that's...
Four fifteen, that's what we had, you're concerned.
Yeah, that's, that's five ten for this year. At four thirty-four for ten months, four thirty-five, that's forty-three thousand.
No, no, we're not, no, no, we, 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 a lot of our expenses are fuck-loaded.
Okay.
They're fuck-loaded early in the year.
Alright, you gotta move the average to forty-four, that's another eighty-eight thousand dollars.
No, we don't, yeah, no, no, we, no.
I thought that happened, you're still, you're still right, you're a lot of expense.
Usually the last couple of months of the year, of the fiscal year, I, I, it's pretty easy to forecast, we pay everything.
Okay.
Limited salaries, kinda, you know, what's a reoccurring cost that we have? You know, a lot of it is utility, but, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward stuff.
I think what comes down is, we got three D one, three ninety-nine, four eighty, then we're gonna go drop down to three seventy-eight. A week half, and then, then we're gonna lop off twenty-two, three percent of our budget in one year. That's, that's a, it's a heck of a swing, you know, the goals.
I...
Yeah, without the details, I can't, I can't necessarily tell.
Well, I, when I look at these numbers, my, my goal here is, look at these numbers, and say, what do I think, based upon nine years of experience? What do I think a reasonable, conservative number is? So, now, and of course I round it off, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, we spent three thousand one sixty-eight.
I'm actually gonna question you, because Mark, I said, I think you did a very good detailed job here. I just, like, yeah, it goes back to the point, if the Council really figured out how we're gonna chop twenty-three percent of our budget off, and I don't think we can answer that question.
Well, like I said, you can look at these numbers, right now, we're looking at this column right here, if there's a number you don't think is a good number, and you wanna change it, I'm listening. I, I don't, I, I'm not wedded everywhere in these numbers, and these are my first step, I think these are pretty good, but, do you think thirty's a better number for attorney fees, that gives you more?
I just, I'm questioning, you know, I'm good with the increase in payroll, I'm good with these, some of these, I just don't see twenty-three percent, you've got, somebody else did my numbers, here, David, I, my head twenty-three, twenty-three percent decrease in costs.
Okay, well, right now, okay, right now, we're looking at this column of numbers right here on the right. Does anybody wanna change any numbers?
That's, regardless of changing something, the town on A S on the twenty, if we're gonna put together a budget, and all of a sudden it'll be twenty-three percent higher, I mean, that's, that's, that's where we're gonna find ourselves in ten months if we don't get this right.
We're, we're picking numbers here, Dan, these are the numbers, okay? This is my, if you think a number here should be higher, tell me. Otherwise, if something happens that we don't anticipate, then we'll deal with it, I mean, either fish or cut bait, either, tell me, yes, we overshot the budget last year because we had very large attorney bills. That's what happened, it's pretty easy to understand.
And that was gonna be my, my question, without, without looking at individual line items, just looking at the bottom, I understand Dan's concern, because it looks like we've historically spent more money than that. So, historically, we've spent more money than that, so what's the contingency if all of a sudden we wind up with four hundred and forty thousand in expenses with four hundred and fifty? We said the revenue's pretty solid, the revenue's gonna be around four fifty.
I'll just...
The revenues are solid, so what happens if we incur all those extra legal expenses and all that? What do we do?
We'll have to rework the budget and not spend what we forecasted the budget.
Well, okay, so that's what I'm saying, so, so some of the line items would be zeroed out during the year, just say, hey, guys, we can't spend this money, because we gotta spend it over here.
In, 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 in theory, you're, yes, the practical side is, honestly, it's difficult, what are we gonna get rid of, toner? You know, no, I can't, you know, that's the rub.
That's my question, I mean, if, 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 if we're confronted, I understand, I understand the budgeting process, okay?
But, you know...
But, my, my question is, okay, the, the numbers sound reasonable for right now, um, but how do we get around the, again, if historically we, we spend more money than that? How do we get around it if we get nailed with our usual expenditures are over four hundred thousand bucks?
Well, if you look back, historically, we don't spend more than the budget, we spend a lot less than the budget.
Okay.
We, we built up huge surplus, we had eight hundred thousand dollars in the bank when we did the concrete roads.
Okay.
We historically have always run a huge budget surplus on the general fund.
Okay.
It wasn't until two thousand and fifteen, we overshot because of the attorney fees.
Okay.
We have litigation, we've never been in litigation, we've never, at least in my era, we haven't had litigation, we don't know what it costs, you get the bill, you get the bill, you pay the bill.
Right.
So, we had litigation, this year, we had more litigation. Now, we have reserve funds, we have a general fund reserve, we have, you know, rainy day fund.
Right.
You know, we ate into that rainy day fund this year.
Okay.
We used something, that, that happened, that's why it's there.
Okay.
Now, in two thousand and six, seventeen, I don't know what's gonna happen, I cannot tell you something that I don't know, that's why it's called unanticipated. So, the reality is that if something, if somebody, somebody sues us, and the attorney says, look, it's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars for me to defend you, as a city, we're gonna be hurt.
Right.
What are we gonna do? Well, we'll have to figure that out, but the reality is, there's limited things you can do, you can't disconnect the phones, you can't not mow the city, you know, I mean, that's why that line always got zeroed. Why did the playgrounds go to zero every single year? Because that was the one that was easy to zero out.
Right.
You know, we can't not air condition the building, I tried, but Linda keeps turning the air.
Are you with the line?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, that's why, you know, yes, if we have a wild swing, we're gonna have a problem, but these two years were abnormal because of the legal bills. We always ran surpluses every year before. So...
Do you guys hear point? Two hours ago, we racked up seven point five million dollars in outstanding debt for the next couple of years.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe, maybe it's happened yet.
Nothing's happened yet, but, we're looking at a budget here that, I, I don't see how we connect the conversation from, I won't say this one, from the beginning of this meeting to, to here, because it looks like every line item can't be touched, and, you know, we're talking about, we've got roads that have deteriorated, and we've got other things that are going on. And, and there's a litigation item that we are assuming is gonna drop way back. We're dropping a budget twenty-three percent, great, um, we can tweak the numbers, great, but the totals don't make sense to me, and I'm not looking at the line items, I'm just saying, you look at the totals, guys, the totals are not...
I don't understand, I don't understand, why don't, we just began, doesn't matter, we're gonna move on, remember, the debt is on the utility side, it's nothing to do with the city.
The only, the only question I have is, we have, like, they have utility funds here, I understand you're, you're, I understand different pots, okay, coming out of the military. Um, however, my, I, I don't see roads, where do the roads fall?
The roads are separate funds, separate.
So, there's a separate budget now for roads?
They're separate, they're in a separate, separate bank account, separate fund.
Okay.
So, again, the funding, the question, where does the funding come from?
Well, I hope we're gonna see that.
And, and that's where, remember, I'm trying to run the town on seventy-nine thousand dollars, trying to keep the lights on, Linda paid these lights on, the phones operating.
Why you saw three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, where's seventy-nine come from?
Because now you gotta also pay the bond services, you gotta pay the debt out there.
Right.
Okay, so, we've gotta pay that debt, and then we have other transfers going on.
Right.
I'm looking at it from the taxes.
Right.
Right, so, we're trying to run the town with a fraction of the amount of money that we have before. So, the roads, obviously, are a different priority, because there's no way you can do concrete roads, and then turn around and spend, we were spending about seventy to eighty thousand dollars, snow lane cost eighty-six thousand dollars to pay. Metal lane, and, and that cost over a hundred thousand to do the blacktop.
And you're gonna have to...
We, we can't, the money's not there, you, you, you can't get there from here, either raise the taxes, you gotta figure out a way to give me more revenue. Cutting the toner won't get it.
Right.
There, there's, there's no more cuts, you can't cut two hundred thousand dollars out of an eighty thousand dollar budget, there's no way to get there from here. So, we've gotta look at it incrementally. Alright, so, on the utility fund side. Alright, so when we do utility fund, the issue becomes one, um, you can't look at ten months and just multiply whatever, because it's seasonal. We're in our peak period now, so January's not the same as August, so you look at it year-to-date. So, the water right now is at about nine point seven percent over one year ago today, but remember, last year, we had a buttload of rain, the lake was up and everything else, so, it's a tricky comparison. So, what I've done is, I've basically said that, uh, we're gonna pick the number, go slightly above, we had a hundred and fifty thousand last year. In fifteen, we had a hundred and forty-three. According to the, uh, QuickBooks, so I'm budgeting a hundred and fifty-four.
Two point six percent.
Yeah, a slight increase in water, and that boils down to the fact that we've got four new houses. Four houses equals about two percent, so, count on about two percent more water revenue, and you're not gonna be off by very much. Sewer revenues, you can see, we're right on the money. We're point three, we're basically flat from a year ago, yeah, because it's a fixed map, it's a flat fee, so of course it should be the same. Same with the sewer, I'm sorry, same with the garbage, we're right on the money, which was where we were a year ago, because they're a flat rate. The garbage's gonna go up, our contract with the garbage company expires, so in January, our five years of no rate increase are gonna change. So, that's gonna change, starting in January, so, we have an escalator that's built in, we actually negotiated with them when they changed it, they didn't do it. They actually, I think they made a mistake, but they typed in two thousand and seventeen, when we renewed it in two thousand and fifteen, so we actually got an extra two years, we did the contract. So, that's why that's forty-six, even though we're running a little bit, um...
Is it gonna be passed down to the conservatives?
Yep. Yeah.
As long as they're into the cans, I don't care.
Is what is.
Last four weeks, they're in.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not questioning.
That house is coming, I'll take care of it.
Okay, last, last four weeks, they're not in my cans.
Let me know. Tuesday morning, let me know if it has been empty, I'll take care of it.
Okay, on the, uh, on the rest of these items here, everything, you know, there, there's our restitution that we got, obviously, from the embezzler, that, that will repeat. Miscellaneous, so you may, just so you know what, miscellaneous comes in weird places, sometimes what we'll do is, we will do a repair on a sewer line, where it's not clear, uh, who's at fault. Water lines are easy, water lines, because there's a meter, you're either on your side of the meter or outside of the meter, well, in, in my era, what happens is, if it's in the meter box, if they have to dig it up to find out where it is, we fix it, I don't care whose side it's on. If we dig it up, because it's close to the meter box, we're not gonna take laser beams to figure out that it's actually six inches on your side of the meter, we just pay for it. With the sewer repair, sewer repairs, sewer lines break at the junction between the city and the person. At that point, you cannot tell who moved, it's busted, we gotta fix it, in most cases, I make a deal with the homeowner, and we split it. So, that seems to be an equitable thing to do, so when they pay us, we can either go to the repair line and negate it, or we can count it as miscellaneous revenue. We count it as miscellaneous revenue, so the amount of money we spend on repairs is a good estimate of what we spend on repairs, we don't negate it there, okay? So, that's what that miscellaneous is, it depends, it's, it's kinda some, we got some other eyeballs in there, do you remember any, Linda?
I'm trying to think, I don't know, I don't remember.
Sometimes we get, we get a couple of weird things that can happen, um, I think it's, we had a couple of liens, people bail on us.
Yeah, utility liens.
We, we, if it's a, if it's, if it's, if somebody leaves, we can lien the house, and then the person that ends up, the bank that owns it, they come back and gets it before it closes, we have utility liens on it. It's not, anyway, the bank pays us, so, um, that goes in there. Tap fees, sewer fees, uh, all this kinda stuff, this is predicated on, um, I think that's three houses, is that three houses? Uh, three or four, I forget where it is, um, but those are our tap fees, it's basically, you know, if we get to three or four houses, oh, sorry, so here it is over here, it's, uh, three, it's four houses, so these three right here are based on us getting forty, forty houses, that's our fees that we charge you. And then, uh, that's an estimate of what, uh, the, uh, the M D D will pay us back. Anyway, utility fund stuff is usually pretty, pretty straightforward on the revenue side. Any questions about revenues? They're, they're pretty much, other than the water, the sewer, the garbage, they're plug and play, it's, it's all pretty much the same.
Good one.
Okay, on the, uh, expense side, again, I've given you kinda the actions here, so you can see them. Office supplies, that's the envelopes, that's the toner, that's the bills, we gotta send out the bills on the utility side. Um, that's obviously the postage, insurance, um, everything's pretty much straightforward, one number is going to have to change, so this number right here, the thirty-six six will change. I talked to Mark Patterson, we were going back and forth, it turns out, I thought Mark's contract is expiring, he didn't think so, it turns out it is. So Patterson's contract is up, so he's got another three-year contract that we have to approve. He wants to set the rate at thirty-six hundred a month, um, which would be what, thirty-six and seven, forty-two-two? So, that would go up from thirty-six six to forty-two two.
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, yeah, um, I went and looked at the miscellaneous revenue, that was the per, thank you, that was, uh, the purchase, when we sold the excess purchasing for the Rocket Point system, and two utility liens.
Uh, so, this thirty-six six needs to change, so when we're gonna approve Patterson's contract, that would be forty-two two. And his contract's on three years fixed. It's a three-year fixed contract, uh, it includes Rocky Point, uh, it includes us, obviously, water and sewer and everything, so it's, um, I, I think it's pretty reasonable, it's about ten percent, so ten percent, I don't even know what that would be, thirty-six to forty-two, it's about six. Fifteen, twenty percent increase over three years.
Fifteen, yeah.
Now, just everybody knows, in two thousand and, I think twelve, and we were paying over fifty thousand for the operator. So, we have saved a lot of money by him doing it, plus we have more perfect, he's worth every penny, he's a godsend, relative to the guy that we had before this, who was awful.
I mean, the first B, the first year of loan, he likes to pay you back, and what he, just, you know, like utilities, like, how much you bill.
Yeah, it is amazing, yeah, he, he was, I think his first year was like twenty-eight or so, I mean, it was a ridiculously low number. So, that number's gonna be forty-two two. So, I'm gonna change that number. Ed, have you wrote down?
Yep.
Okay, Ed's got that number. Did you guys, mapping is all done, you've got that square away, alright, engineer? This is those impact fees. We gotta pay the engineer, we are teed up for around a hundred thousand dollars, about ninety thousand dollars this year, is, uh, we've already approved contracts for the guys here, we've paid about twenty. I think we've paid about twenty, the do not exceed number is around a hundred, for all this engineering related to the impact fees, but some of it is gonna be, is gonna be cheaper because we're picking back on it to get. So, those are, and we're doing the advertising stuff, so we're doing a lot of, you know, when's it gonna, when's the, as they go, but within a year or...
It'll, it'll be...
It should be, we should be done this, this year.
It should be done in December, I mean, once we do the final public hearing.
Yeah, because October is when we were scheduled to do the...
Yeah, so by the time the invoices are on it, it'll be...
So, most of it should be this year, so just help me out, eighteen-four, I have this year, thirty thousand, the budget next year, fifty thousand dollars, was there a fifty? Well, in eighteen-four, we're gonna blow through, so we're saying that in fiscal two thousand and thirteen, we're gonna exceed the budget. I anticipate that before the end of the year, the engineer's gonna give us some bills, and those, those are gonna exceed the thirty thousand, yeah, but I don't know what they are yet, because I don't know how far.
So, the two budget items for thirty here and thirty there, sixty, really gonna be on it?
No, the do not exceed number, it might be around eighty. One of the things is, we do a lot of the labor for the engineer, I mean, Clint does most of it, because we're not gonna pay them to get out data. You know, how much flow data do we have on a daily basis, how much sewage, how much water do we pump, how often wells run, we have all that data for Patterson, we're not gonna have the engineer going to get it. Clint does it, so we upload it to the cloud, we do a lot of data now, data acquisition on our own, to cut this bill down, so. But, yeah, so, now, is, is any of that impact, these stuff can still over? When we have engineering relating to the plat, land grain or something else, they should pay for it, you know?
The interesting thing about this line item is the only one in the budget that actually pays for itself.
So, what?
All of that money is actually recoverable someday, I'm saying, we gotta pay for it now, but it is actually recoverable.
So, that, that's a, that's a guess. That's a guess, because I don't know where we're gonna be at at the end of this year.
We probably shouldn't punch that up, I mean, we could, we could get a little closer than that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay moving that number up. We wanna make it forty, it's just a question of how far we're gonna get, you know, in, in this year versus that year.
And again, just, just to repeat myself, we're spending a hundred grand in somewhere, there should be a lot of plan, a lot of planning, detailed numbers, and you can slide, month to month, whatever, but we should have a better control of a hundred grand, just thirty percent of the budget.
Okay, but we have a plan.
But you have it, and we had that before you got here.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, that we should, we should see it, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, the Council's already approved, we've already got the plan, we already have the task, we already have the sequence, we already have the calendar.
The twenty seventeen budget, where's the plan?
I can't give you a plan, because I don't know where we're gonna be at the end of twenty sixteen, I don't know how many steps they're gonna get through before the end of the year, so I, I don't know how to start. I don't know how many steps they're gonna get through before the end of the year. So I, I don't know how to start twenty seventeen. I have to make an assumption, and I don't know where the engineers are gonna be.
I don't have a plan or anything like that, but, I mean, if you have a plan, you would know where we're gonna be, give it ten, ten percent.
Depends if a developer walks in or not walk. Part of, part of the problem is, again, we don't control the developer. We, we can't control the inputs and the outputs.
Not, not all of that is the impact fee itself, so it was actually absorbing for whatever other engineering we have to do.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. We don't know what that thirty thousand is for. Because if.
Thirty thousand is a guess. It's, it's a, I can put zero in there, and then we can all be mystified as the stuff rolls in, and we can all.
And then next year, we'll argue about the, the numbers down at the bottom in second.
So, I, I take a, I take a shot at, knowing this, there's a lot of variation in this. It depends. I, I cannot tell you what that number should be. I'm guessing thirty is my guess, but I expect it could be higher. Did you wanna leave it at thirty? Does somebody wanna make it forty?
I'll just skew right down the park. I mean, I'll sit for the house, I'll sit in. I hope you're with us either. Until we get to the cap on improvements, we're gonna have the same question.
Okay, so.
I think that's, that's one way we probably push up a little bit. We know where, where we're gonna be.
Okay, you wanna make it thirty to forty?
Yeah.
Okay, can you, and I don't have.
Yeah, I got it. I got it.
You make the, yeah. Okay. I think, I think that's good.
We, we know we're probably gonna, there's gonna be some other activities coming up. We're, we're doing some water maintenance ourselves. There could be some other tasking.
Yeah, another thing is, uh, which I haven't definitely with that, Dan, is that, you know, the new tanks, everything we do, we may have to get them to use a Mickey Mouse engineer at the T C Q. We're gonna, we're gonna, sometimes even if you're putting in a water tank, it's the same water tank. T C Q wants you to pick the water tank, draw it, stamp on it, you know, it's Mickey Mouse stuff. So. And I, I did not factor any of that engineering in. Okay, same old stuff here. You know, water and sewer repairs, it's a guess. We just always guess ten and ten each year. Last year was twelve and eleven, now we're one and twelve. It's random. Just guess ten and ten. If I knew what was gonna break, I'd fix it now, but I don't know what's gonna break. We have a massive sewer repair on the docket. It's gonna be starting soon. And, uh, it's all in this part of town. We'll see. It's, it's, sewer repairs are gonna be big. It's a big repair. We did it. We got it blown onto the street. A lot of it's gonna be covered by tap fees, but a significant portion is our sewer lines. We don't have a choice. And if you go down to eighteen feet, you start digging almost eighteen feet deep, you gotta have shore. You gotta do ocean. You gotta, no, we're not gonna kill anybody. So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be expensive. Meter set fees are passed through. Water equipment, this is, again, is us building our inventory of repair parts, meters, meter boxes, couplings.